So we'll go ahead and call the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting to order for May 5th at 6:30, and we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
And I think we have the rare opportunity that we are all in the same room. None of the commissioners are online, so we are just here other than Henry. Do you need to do attendance?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Mr. Melter.
I'm here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
Commissioner Loman.
Here.
And Henry did call, so he has excuse for tonight. He's out.
Right. So at this time in our meeting, this is the time, if anybody wishes to speak on anything or address a topic that is not on our agenda for tonight, this would be the time to do so. I don't see anybody moving, so we'll go ahead and move on to our meeting minutes from April 7th, Planning Commission. Does anybody have any changes or alterations or corrections that need to be made to the meeting minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as printed.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Melter, are you seconded?
Yes.
You can just do, Jeff, you can just do all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We'll move on to our public hearings for the evening. Are we, um, are we good to go ahead as an order? Do you want to change the order at all?
Nope, just as ordered.
All right. All right, so we're going to go ahead and open up the public meeting for application ZMA 2201 at 6:34. The applicant is proposing, oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 114,690 square feet located in Sweet Home, Tax Lot 13 SO1E 32AB, Tax Lot Number 500. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the commercial highway C2 zone to the industrial M-zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to make the recommendation to the City Council. City Council will hold a public hearing to decide on this application. All right. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So with that being read in, do any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
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 Okay, any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
All right, and I have none. Angela, go ahead and go to you for the staff report.
As Mr. Parker stated, the subject tract contains approximately 114,690 square feet. The property is currently zoned commercial highway and the comprehensive plan designation is industrial. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning to industrial, bringing it into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. Based on the review of the FEMA firm map dated September 29th, 2010, the subject property is not in the hundred-year floodplain. The subject property does not show wetlands, waterways, or waterways on the property that are depicted on the Sweet Home local wetlands inventory map, or does show, I'm sorry, does show wetlands and waterways. It is the SSR-19A. The subject property has frontage along 24th Avenue. The subject property has access to city water and sewer services from 24th Avenue. Based on the Lynn County 2021 aerial photo, the area has industrial lots to the northwest and east and commercial highway to the south. There is no development planned with the Zone Map Amendment application. The proposed zoning plan designation would be consistent with the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan. Based on the findings, the application would comply. Staff finds that the proposed zoning map amendment would be orderly and timely, be consistent with the pattern of development in the area, and based on the 2021 Lynn County aerial photograph, staff finds that the subject property has industrial lots to the northwest and east and commercial highway to the south. The subject property has frontage along 24th Avenue. Water and sanitary sewer services are available on 24th Avenue. The applicant has not proposed development with the Zone Map Amendment application. The subject property has existing frontage along 24th Avenue. The applicant has proposed a change in zoning from commercial highways onto industrial zone. The proposed use would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and based on these findings, the staff concludes that the proposed zone change would not significantly affect the existing transportation infrastructure in the neighborhood and is consistent with the Sweet Home Transportation System Plan. Based on the findings listed in Section 3 of this report, staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve this application. Since the request is for a zone change, staff has not recommended any conditions of approval. In acting on a zone change application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it either, it may either recommend that the City Council approve or deny the applications. The recommendation should be based on the applicable review and design criteria. The City Council will hold a public meeting hearing and decide on the application. Motion after opening the public hearing, receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. Move to recommend that City Council approve application ZMA 22-01, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report. Move to recommend the City Council deny application ZMA 22-01. Move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other.
All right.
Do you guys have any questions for staff? Just to make another side note, this application is being filed with a conditional use application, which you'll hear next, in order to, for the use of the property. So there's multiple applications that are kind of going in. They will also, they're also putting in a property line adjustment. If this is approved, they will do, be doing property line adjustments to combine the lots into one. So the subsequent hearings are actually pending the approval of this one. Yeah.
Anybody else have, anybody else have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, at this time, if our applicant is in the room, we would invite them to come forward. Also remind anybody that's here, if you're willing to and wishing to speak, if you would sign in before you leave, that'd be great. After you have a seat, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Mark Lund, 39627 Mount Hope Drive, Lebanon.
Okay, and go ahead and just give us kind of a basic narrative of what you'd like to say.
So the plan is just self-storage units on the property, should be about 600 units.
Is that really it? And would these storage units be similar to the other ones that we have here in town in current?
Yes, yep. So the plan is to do 600 self-storage units, and then we're going to do a couple of light industrial buildings, like about 1,200 square foot, and then we're going to do like canopy, like RV parking. Should be a total of about 600 units.
Do you have any questions for our applicant? No? You're getting off easy.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will open it up for proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of this application. As there are none, any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against this application? Any neutral testimony, not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard? All right. So at this time, we will close the public hearing for discussion amongst the Planning Commission at 6:40. Question?
It's not a part of this application, but clearly there's commercial interests in this property with the next application, but it says there's no development intended, so I don't quite get that.
Yeah, I mean, there is a little bit of, little bit of that.
Does that, can you answer that?
So as part of this application, there is no development future. Their development is dependent on, if they develop, dependent on four different applications. So, but with the submission of this one, there is no development. It's just a matter of the zone change.
And this one brings us into complacency with our comprehensive.
The zoning is consistent with the surrounding zoning of the adjacent properties, and storage units definitely are in high demand and needed.
Anybody else have any discussion on the application or questions?
Nothing regarding the rezoning.
So in regards to application ZMA 2201, are you in motion?
I'll make a motion. I would move to recommend to the City Council to approve application ZMA 22-01, which includes adopting the findings of facts listed in the staff report.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Don't pick your creaks.
Just a reminder to please turn on your microphones if you speak.
All right. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing for CU 22-08 at 6:43. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for self-storage enclosed RV boat storage, canopy parking for RV and boat, and light industrial space in an industrial M1s, or M-zone, I'm sorry. Any other use that is compatible with the purpose or intent of the zone, and that would have offsite impacts that would not significantly exceed those that are typical of any other conditionally, conditionally permitted uses listed in this section, Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.44.030L. Tax Lot 100 contains approximately 257,366 square feet and is in, and is in the industrial M-zone. Tax Lot 101 contains approximately 5,831 square feet and is in the industrial M-zone. Tax Lot 500 contains approximately 114,690 square feet and is pending Zone Map Amendment Application ZMA 2201, amending Tax Lot 500 from commercial highway C2 to industrial M-zone. And I guess go ahead and with, application CU 2208 is pending the decision of application ZMA 2201. Applications CU 2208 and ZMA 2201 are being filed simultaneously. The applicant is applying for a property line adjustment to combine lots 100, 101, and 500. Applications PLA 2208, PLA 2209 were submitted on April 22nd, 2022, and the property line adjustments are pending the approval of application ZMA 2201. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. With that being read into record, do any of our commercials, commissioners, sorry, have any personal bias in regard to this application?
No.
No.
Any conflicts of interest?
No.
Any ex parte information?
No.
All right, so we will head over to Angela, our reporter on the ground, for her staff report.
All right, so for CU 22-08, Tax Lot 101 is in the industrial M-zone, Tax Lot 500.
I'm mute. Is in the commercial highway C2 zone. Tax Lot 500 is pending the approval of Zone Map Amendment Application ZMA 22-01, amending it to industrial M-zone. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for self-storage enclosed RV boat storage, canopy parking for RV boat, and light industrial space in an industrial M-zone. Chapter 17.44 Industrial Zone states, "Any other use that is compatible with the purposes and intent of the zone and that would have offsite impacts that would not significantly exceed those that are typical of the other conditionally permitted uses listed in this section," per Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.44.030L. For this application to comply with all applicable city codes and state and federal laws, this application may require additional permits. This application is approved, staff recommends a condition of approval that prior to operation, the applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. The applicant shall submit copies of all the required permits and licenses to the Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record. With the approval of Zone Map Amendment Application ZMA 22-01 and conditional use, application CU-22, CU 22-08, the applicant intends on combining the tax lots 100, 101, and 500 into lot, into one lot. With the approval of the property line adjustment, staff finds that the site size, dimensions, location to part of being accessed are adequate for the proposed use. Applications PLA 22-08 and PLA 22-09 were submitted on April 22nd, 2022. Staff has not identified any negative impacts to adjacent properties. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in Section 4 of this report. The subject property has access to city water and sewer in 24th Avenue. Per the Public Works comments in Section 2, there is a stormwater channel across the subject property that conveys runoff from a significant area. Public Works desires an easement to make the channel public. Per the staff engineers' comments in Section 2, there is a six-inch water line in 24th Avenue to provide adequate water for onsite or fire use. Stormwater drainage from all the impervious surfaces will need to be quality and flow-controlled prior to the adjacent creek drainage system. The applicant is not proposing a home occupation. The applicant is not proposing to establish a marijuana facility. The provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the Planning Commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria, as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. A specified in the Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.050, conditions could include, but are not limited to, expanding setbacks, limiting hours of operation, acquiring site or architectural design features, imposing additional signed standards, and so forth. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of this report. These conditions are primary, primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to the application. As required under this section, staff recommends that a condition of approval require that the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the Planning Commission approval, if the use has not been substantially established, as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.070A. Within that time period, within that time period, city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than one-year requests made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the Planning Commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired, and a new application will be required. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below are required in order to ensure that the applicant, the application is consistent with the findings and the review and design criteria in Section 3, and is required with Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, may only be based on review and design criteria contained in Section 3. Recommended conditions of approval for CU 22-08, one, the property ownership obtained and comply with all applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. Staff recommends an easement to the stormwater channel across the subject property that contain, that conveys runoff from a significant area. Staff recommends an easement to make this channel public. Three, the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the Planning Commission approval, if the use has not been substantially established, as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.80.070A, within that time period. City planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one-year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of their approved period. Requests other than a one-year request made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the Planning Commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired, and a new application will be required. In acting on a conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it either may approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in Section 4. The appeal period pursuant to ORS 227.175, the Planning Commission may establish an appeal period of not less than 12 days from the date of the written notice that the Planning Commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is the Planning Commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date of the, that notice of decision is mailed. Order after the Planning Commission decides, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval of the application if it is approved. Motion after the opening of public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. One, move to approve application CU 22-08, which includes the adopting, adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report, and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report. The setting of a 12-day appeal, appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by chair to memorialize this decision. Move to deny application CU 22-08, which includes adopting the findings of fact, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize the decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
No.
Okay, at this time, we will again ask our applicant to come forward. Again, upon being seated, do you want to just state your name and address for the record?
Mark Lund, 39627 Mount Hope Drive, Lebanon.
And I know it seems a little bit redundant, but go ahead and fire off the basic reason for your application.
To construct 6-hour units, 600 unit storage, self-storage units, which would be six light industrial buildings and canopy RV boat parking spaces.
Do any of our commissioners have any questions for our applicant in regards to this application? I'm going to fire off one. So are you planning on having this as a 24-hour facility, or would you have normal hours of operation, gated system similar to other?
Yes, 24, 24/7 access, yeah.
Okay.
Scared camera, all good stuff.
Since, since it's 24 hours, I, I came from Florida, and we had a couple locations that wasn't supervised, or will there be a property manager on board? Because this one location in Florida, we had people actually living out of the units.
Um, there's, there's a few, few ideas in there right now. We're probably going to go with diversified property management. They were kind of giving us ideas of what they want to do. If we want to do like a self-automatic made-of system where you like swipe a key card, and there's like just tons of cameras, or is there going to be like an onsite manager living there kind of thing? But there's just a bunch of ideas we're going to throw out there. But I think, I think we're going to sway it to the, having an onsite manager like 24/7 living there.
But you'd also stress to the people that would rent, that they can't live in one of the units, right?
Of course, yep.
You know, sneak in there at nighttime because they have no place to go, and they want to crash out.
My dad, he used to, he used to own a bunch of storage units and bin. I remember cleaning some of them out. Majority of the people would be living in there. So, yeah, we'll, we'll come up something to monetize that for sure.
So I have a concern, just, so looking at your plan, it looks like when it comes to the discovered wetlands or possible discovered wetlands on the site, that your plan is to just pave up into and around them?
Um, yeah, we would comply with what setbacks we need to do with the wetlands there, so we'd probably, like, what do you usually do? I think usually like that fence around the wetlands area.
Right, they need to be protected somehow.
Yeah, protected, of course, yeah.
Yeah, so all that, that paving, that, to me, that, that can be damaging to those wetlands, and right now, it's just, you know, green space back there. So we're kind of just giving that up for a pavement slab, essentially.
Does, does some of the places on the wetlands, do they just gravel it? That wouldn't damage the?
I, I don't, I don't believe in, with the Oregon State Code, that that's what, that they, that you can push gravel or dirt or anything into established wetlands. Yeah. Yeah. And then do you have a, like, what you imagine occupancy will be?
Um, well, I mean, there's a waitlist for all the storage units around, so hopefully 100%.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I need a storage unit myself. I got 15 friends that need them, they're all on waitlists, and Lebanon, it's being on Marriott, so, yeah, they're definitely needed.
Yeah.
So the RV stories is going to be covered?
Yes, canopy, sure.
Oh, that would be nice.
Similar, similar to what we would see at the Chittle Lakes.
Yes, exactly.
Good. I think you'd be the first one to do that in town.
Exactly.
Anybody else have any questions for our applicant? All right.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
So at this time, if there's anybody, any proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of this application, this would be the time to do so. Any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against? Neutral testimony, those not wishing to speak in favor or against, just for wishing to be heard? So at this time, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:58 for discussion amongst the commission.
Um, the Public Works Department's comment about they would like to have an easement for the stormwater channel, so we're, do they need to have that? Because we're, condition is to recommend that they do it, and to me, seems like a suggestion, you can or you can't, or do we need to require that?
So the, the easements are definitely needed, and those serve both the property owner and the city.
Okay.
So.
Should we require them to provide an easement for the stormwater channel?
I'm not sure. Have our Public Works staff talked with you about that?
Um, they've had to talk to Eric about that.
Okay. Do you know if that would be a problem? Yeah, so I.
And that, that easement be not just, could that just be like a dedicated access code or something like that to access the property?
So usually those are, are recorded easements that.
Right.
Be recorded at the county level, and then if, it, it doesn't mean that the gate has to stay open, it just means they have to allow us in.
Yeah.
And so we would, they would be legally obligated to, to give us access somehow into that space, which could easily be accomplished through however they want it.
Right.
Code or.
Okay. And commissioners, just to make you aware, so usually these are the things like the easements and whatnot that we work out during the building permit process. They will, and even the site design that you have right now is a draft for the purposes of this application. It's not necessarily their final draft, and those are things that we work through, you know, making sure that they are doing what they're supposed to do with the wetlands, making sure the easements are there, and those are things that are on our checklist when we go through the building permit process. They're not necessarily specific in this application because it's not required. They just provided that so you guys would have an idea of what they were putting in.
So you feel that word recommend, the easement, is sufficient?
I do, because I know that it'll get worked out.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else have any points of discussion, or questions for staff?
I'll make a motion, move to approve application CU 2208, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff. Which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of a twelve day appeal period from the day of the mailing of this decision. And hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing in regards to application C U twenty two oh nine seven oh two. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a non dwelling accessory building. And an RV pad on the subject property in a residential low density R one zone, a secondary use on a lot with without a primary. Without a primary use is allowed per conditional use. Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point two four point oh three O L. Subject property contains approximately seven thousand six hundred and sixty three square feet and is in the residential low density R one zone. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation. Which the person believes to apply to the decision. Though you're to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. Precludes the appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. By being read into any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
No.
Any conflicts of interest?
None.
Any ex parte information?
No.
None.
Again, we will send it over to Angela for the weather. I mean, the staff report.
As stated by Chairman Parker, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a non dwelling accessory building and RV pad on the subject property. Based on the review of the FEMA firm map dated September twenty ninth, twenty ten, the subject property is not in a hundred year floodplain. The subject property does not show wetlands or waterways on the property that are depicted on the Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory and National Wetland Inventory map. Subject property has frontage along Meadowlark Lane. The subject property has access to city water and sewer service from Meadowlark Lane. For this application to comply with all applicable city codes and state and federal laws, this application may require additional permits. If this application is approved, staff recommends a condition of approval that prior to operation. The applicant shall obtain all required local, state and federal permits. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses to Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of C U twenty two dash zero nine. The applicant owns tax lot thirty eight oh two directly south and abutting the subject property. The applicant explored other options with staff, including a property line adjustment to combine tax lots thirty eight oh two and two zero two. In the attached summary attachment B, the applicant states that they are currently unable to do a property line adjustment due to the cost of the required survey. Staff finds that the site size, dimensions, location, topography and access are adequate for the proposed use. Staff has not identified any negative impacts to the adjacent properties to ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code. Staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in section four of this report. The subject property has access to city and water, city water and sewer in Meadowlark Meadowlark Lane. Staff finds that proposed use has adequate capacity. The applicant is not proposing a home occupation. The applicant is not proposing to establish a marijuana facility. The provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the planning commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the planning commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties. The neighborhood and the city as a whole. As specified in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point eight zero point zero five zero. Conditions could include but are not limited to expanding setbacks, limiting hours of operation, requiring site or architectural design features. Imposing additional science standards and so forth. To ensure compliance with the standard listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in section four of this report. These conditions are primarily a customized list of existing local, state and federal standards that apply to the application. As required under this section, staff recommends that a condition of approval require that the conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the planning commission approval. If the use has not been substantially established as defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point eight zero point zero seven zero eight within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than a one year request made prior to the expiration of the approved period must be approved by the planning commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. If the planning commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in it. In order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings and the review and design criteria in section three. And as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the land board use of appeals Luba may only be based on review and design criteria contained in section three. Recommended conditions of approval for C U twenty two dash zero nine. The applicant shall comply with all applicable building code and requirements of the chapter seventeen point two for R one residential low density. When installing the accessory structure and RV pad. The property owner shall obtain and comply with all other applicable local, state and federal permits and requirements. The conditional use permit shall be void one year after the date of the planning commission approval if the use has not been substantially established. As defined under Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point eight zero point zero seven zero eight within that time period. The city planner may grant one extension of up to one year for a conditional use permit that contained a one year initial duration upon written request of the applicant and prior to the expiration of the approved period. Requests other than one year request made prior to the expiration of the approved. Approved. Period must be approved by the planning commission. A conditional use permit not meeting the above timeframes will be expired and a new application will be required. Enacting on a conditional use permit application, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the planning commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in section four. Appeal period pursuant to O R S two two seven point one seven five, planning commission may establish an appeal period of not less than twelve days. From the date of the written notice of the planning commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission's decision on this matter be subject to a twelve day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. Order after the planning commission decides, the staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order would memorialize this decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. One move to approve application C U twenty two dash zero nine, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report. And the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report, the setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision. And hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this this decision. Two move to deny application C U twenty two dash zero nine, which includes adopting the findings of fact. Including the setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. Have any questions for staff?
How big is the shed or structure? And is that what's required or prompting this? Hearing?
So with discussions with the applicant. They weren't, they were talking about two hundred square feet, which they don't need to permit. They can go up to eight hundred and sixty four square feet. The problem is the property that their house is on, there is no room because it goes up to that triangle. If you go between the property lines and the house itself, there's no room to put any kind of structure on. So they don't. Which is why they wanted to use the other lot.
Because of the fact that the other lot is a separate lot without a primary dwelling.
Yeah, and that's the only reason you have to do this. And so so in many discussion.
Like on that property, it is like the whole front front yard includes that part of the lot.
Yes.
Right, yes.
Yeah, and we we staff spoke with the applicants and we looked at all the different options that they could do. The timeframe and the money and, you know, the different options. And this was one of the options. And so they had chosen to go that route.
What's the square feet of the? Proposed on of the lot that we're talking about?
The the second lot, so it is.
The lot that they want to put the structure on?
Seven thousand six hundred and sixty three.
I thought I read that somewhere, okay.
Which is which is a nonconforming lot because most R one lots are supposed to be eight thousand feet, but.
Right, and also it's shaped weirdly. Could you actually put a structure? Could you put a home structure on that?
Um, you know.
With the setbacks.
I mean, it'd be.
Yeah, it'd be really awkward.
So, I mean, looking at if you, the lot that they actually have the house on is lighter. It goes to that point too, but it's lighter, so.
Triangular houses are.
So there's going to be one driveway for the shop and one driveway for the pad? Or is there going to be one driveway for both?
It'll be one driveway and it's more of a shed, not a shop. And they're they're here so you can ask them questions.
Little two hundred square foot.
Oh, I guess I missed that.
Okay, similar to a little.
And we've talked about different sizes, but it wasn't like I said, they're here, so.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have any questions for staff? All right, so then at this time, we will invite our applicant to come forward. If you wish. Hi, and for the record, after you have a seat, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Michael Worthington, and my address is fourteen fifty Meadowlark Lane.
Okay, and if you could just give us another recap of the purpose of your application?
Well, I like to go out and do what I share. Usually just make sawdust. You know, I drive and it's a place for a little bit of storage. And. Came down to get the right setbacks. And then that's when we found out that. You know, we couldn't do something on the lot that we own, which we didn't know that we could. So we have money down on. Our shed. And money down on the pad that it's going to sell.
Okay.
And to lose out now would be kind of detrimental to the pocketbook. But we are improving the house. And it won't be a nice story for any of you who needs it. Quality deal shed. And taking care of our stuff.
Anybody have any questions for our applicant?
I appreciate you going through the appropriate channels to do something like that. We do see, you know, people doing stuff on property that. They know that they probably need to get approval for and do it anyways. And you're doing it the right way.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. Hopefully that helps.
So if I understand correctly, you wanted to put the shed, you were originally just going to put it like over by the house. But because of the shape of the lots and the way they come up there, the lot lines need to be adjusted.
Pretty much anything I wanted since I had a lot.
Oh, no.
No.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it was responsible, but I mean, I just was something that I thought I could do it. And then we came down to find about. Find out about our setbacks and that's when I found out. You know, you learn.
You would think you could do something with your own property, but.
Think so. Trying to do it.
Yeah.
How far will the shed be from your house? Hundred feet, two hundred?
The house itself probably. Kind of up in that. High area there.
Yeah.
Uh, we are actually about thirteen or fourteen feet to the. Corner of the house there, where there's kind of a deck there. And then deck's probably a ten by twelve. And then there would be the house. And then we moved to, I think we are nine and a half feet from the back. Don't let me show you.
No, well, I've got.
And commissioners, just so you're aware, so that is within the setback. So the side setback, and if you notice that they they've got kind of a. Preexisting, their house is like right on the property line, but that's preexisting. So we don't do anything about that. And the requirement is five foot setback from the side or six feet away from the structure. So. And then the rear is fifteen. So they're within that that setback range, so.
And will that area be fenced off or or anything like that? Or? It's okay, because I would think that someone.
Trees and everything else, but we did take it down.
Does anybody else have any questions for our applicant? All right, well, we thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, at this time, we would open it up for anybody, opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application. And the opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against. Any neutral testimony, those not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. Okay, so we will close the public hearing at seven seventeen for discussion amongst the commission. I do appreciate what you said, by the way, as far as doing things the proper channel because you are correct.
Yep.
Normally, people would have just ordered the shed, the shed guy dropped it off and it would have taken. Quite a while before somebody saw it, complained or did something about it. And then it would have been a bigger headache. So.
This property particularly because the yard is kind of included in the property like and I can understand why there was a confusion about being able to just put a shed. Running into this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just like to say, I I understand all the options were looked at and this is what what was chosen. I do agree with Joe Grable with engineering. That the tidy way would be to. Combine the two lots. So hopefully that maybe could be done in the future.
Yeah, the lot line adjustment will need to be made in the future, just so in. That future sales of the lot don't run into issues.
Well, and if they choose to do something down the road, it will just make it much, much easier. But I do understand that the constraints financially. Surveys are not cheap right now.
And knowing that they now have to put in a RV pad.
Yeah.
That's not cheap either. So dollar bills start adding up.
If we don't have any other discussion or questions for staff? Looking for a motion.
Well, I'll move to approve application C U twenty two dash zero nine. Which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much and welcome to Sweet Home.
Thanks for improving that neighborhood too.
Yeah.
The neighbors will appreciate it.
I've only ever heard of one other person named Worthington and I went to high school with him. They were twins. Yes, thank you. All right, so that concludes our public portion of the meeting tonight. Got some. Fun and exciting stuff. So. I'm going to hand to Angela, but I'm going to have to excuse myself for just a minute. I'm going to have a coffee pit. I'm going to do it out there.
I noticed you were holding it together.
Oh, man.
Sure, so. As we talked about before, you all have the pleasure of being the committee for our housing needs analysis. So on the line on for on teams, we have Scott and Tim joining us. They're with the firm that's. F C S group that's doing our housing needs analysis. And so I'll just kind of turn it over to them. They have a presentation for you and kind of outline the steps that we have.
Excellent. I guess we'll do introductions, but thank you, Blair, for doing that. I'm Scott Frigancy, three J Consulting. And we're kind of working on the buildable lands section. And Tim, I don't know, you would you like to introduce yourself as well?
Sure, yeah. My name is Tim Wood. I'm a project manager with F C S Group. And like Scott said, we're we're partnering on this one. So Scott and and three J are focused on project management and and buildable land inventory stuff. For us at F C S, we'll be working on the. For us at FCS, we'll be working on the, the housing needs projection, which we'll talk to you about tonight. And then later on, the residential land needs analysis.
And again, thank you so much for being our ad hoc committee on this. Sometimes, you know, we looked at former committee, but using the planning commission is always efficient. And you guys are well-versed in land use, so it makes a lot of sense to have you helping us out. I'm going to attempt to share my screen and we'll go through a fairly quick presentation. See if I can do this. I don't think we're seeing the right thing, are we?
Yeah, we're looking at your team's screen right now.
That's not what we want. This is what we want.
It's a nice background though.
Well, thank you. We'll do this, all right. So we're talking about the housing needs analysis we're working on. We've been working on this for a few months now, been able to share some of it with staff, but happy to be able to share it with the planning commission tonight. The agenda looks like the welcome, which we've already got through. We're going to do a little bit of a project overview in terms of the schedule and tasks we hope to accomplish. Tim's going to go through a little brief set of slides that will talk about what your housing needs are over the next 20 years. I'm going to give you a preliminary presentation on kind of the mapping and the GIS work we've been working on to do, to conduct the buildable land inventory and then kind of talk about when we're going to meet with you next and what we'll be working on through this process. In terms of the project overview, right now, the first kind of product we're sharing with you as the PAC, our committee this month is the housing needs projection. We will touch on the buildable lands inventory, but next meeting, I don't know, we have it scheduled for July, but it may be, if we can push it up till June and get it done, I'd like to do that. As of now, we'd probably meet with you during your July planning commission meeting to present the buildable lands inventory. Beyond that, we'd work on our residential land needs analysis. So that's kind of how much housing you need versus how much vacant land you have to accommodate that. And then finally, it's really the measures to accommodate that need. So the whole idea behind this is making some recommendations that Sweet Home can do to kind of make sure that we fulfill that housing need over the next 20 years. And then looking at the fall, hopefully October, November, maybe September, looking at adoption. So this is kind of a elongated schedule, but we may be pushing it a little bit if we can get the work done quickly. So that's the quick overview of the, of the project Excel, Excel itself. And then, Tim, I'd like to let you head on into the housing needs projection slides.
Sure, okay. So thanks so much for taking the time with us tonight. I know you've got a packed agenda, so we'll try to keep it brief here. But just to give you an overview of what the housing needs analysis is, it's a requirement based, based on state law. It's one of the larger land use laws that exist. And it's to ensure that there's adequate land to develop residential property over the next 20 years to meet demand. And this looks like four separate components, one of which is the housing needs projection, which we'll be talking about tonight. Buildable land inventory, which we'll also be talking a little bit about tonight. And then the residential land needs analysis, which is kind of a fusing of those two things to show you how much land the demand that we project is going to need. And then we kind of finish it out with policy recommendations to ensure that you're able to, to meet the demand over the next 20 years and to address any of the issues that we might find in, in other ways. So to start off, the, the housing needs projection is of course driven by population growth. Sweet Home is, like many cities in the Willamette Valley area, adding a lot of people, projected to add 1,720 over the next 20 years, which is a lot. So we're going to have to plan to make sure that there's enough housing for that additional 720 people. Or sorry, 1,720. Another component is to just understand what the existing housing inventory is like in Sweet Home. So that is, is what you're looking at here. 73% of your housing stock is in single-family detached, which is very standard for the state. And then you've got 7% in multifamily, 7% in townhomes and 13% in manufactured homes and other sorts of kind of otherwise not classifiable housing types. Vacancy was about 5% in 2020. We kind of expect that to have dropped a little bit in the meantime, but these are the, these are the data that we have to work with. So this is just to kind of give us a sense of, of how it is now. And, you know, we'll use this to help project demand into the future about, you know, do we need to plan for more multifamily or more single-family detached, that kind of thing.
And Tim, is this pretty standard for Willamette Valley cities in terms of this mix?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. 73% is a little high on the single-family detached side, but very, you know, not, not very much. And then the rest of that breakout is, is pretty standard for sure.
Right.
And then another way that we have to look at this is based on owner occupied and renter occupied units. So you can see here, these, the green sections of the bars, those are owner occupied units and the kind of the more turquoisey, dark green colored components of the bars are renter occupied. So you can see there with your single-family detached housing stock, most of it is owner occupied and you pretty much expect that. But a good chunk of that is renter occupied, townhomes, multifamily and manufactured. They all have good chunks of, of renter occupied and there's a good little section of, of owner occupied there in the manufactured home category as well. Overall, oh geez, I guess I don't have an overall. But it's, it's probably, it's usually about, you know, 60, 63% owner occupied in communities like Sweet Home. So that's probably what we're looking at here. A really crucial component to understand is the average household size. And you know, we're seeing a lot of noise about, you know, where that's headed in the next 20 years. But here's where we're at over the last 10. You can see in Sweet Home that you move from 2.41 people per household to 2.59 people per household between 2010 and 2020. And 2015 there, a little bit of noise where it shoots up, so. But the really relevant component of our calculation is there's 2.59 people per household in Sweet Home. And you can see that that's right in line with the Lynn County average and a little bit above the state of Oregon's average. A really important component that the state wants us to, to make sure that we center more for policy considerations than anything is just the notion of severe rent burden, which is a condition where folks are paying more than 50% of their household income on housing. So this is specifically among renters in Sweet Home, but you can see that nearly 30% of household, of renter households in Sweet Home are severely rent burdened, so paying more than 50% of their, their, their household income on, on housing. And you can see why, over the last two years especially, but over the last probably couple decades, you've seen pretty significant increases in home values. And you can see here, particularly in Sweet Home over the, you know, 2020 to 2022 timeframe, you've, you've averaged 19.4% annual home value growth. So you've moved from 244,000 per, per home, you know, average or sorry, median home value to 348. So over $100,000 in increase over the last two years. So that's driving a lot of that housing, housing cost burden, you know, not just for, for people who are trying to own, but for people who are trying to rent as well. You know, as, as that demand increases, the price is going to increase too. So we're just seeing that here as we do. And all the rest of these communities, you can see Lebanon, Brownsville, Albany Junction City, all experiencing the same kind of very rapid increase in average home value. Is there a question? Okay, sorry.
I had one, I had a question real quick about the state annual change. And if it was not closer to 15, so Sweet Home is higher than the state, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so we're seeing, we're seeing higher increases in, in Sweet Home and in the surrounding areas as well. And just to give you a sense again of how attainable is housing? So recall that we've got, you know, probably like $350,000 of, for an average home in, in Sweet Home. And just to give you a sense for what folks, you know, who are, you know, your neighbors are, are making and, and how affordable that could be to them. So you can see for, for a lawyer, you know, their, their mortgage is, is likely to be, you know, right around 655,000. So they're not going to really have a hard time necessarily from a price perspective, finding a home in Sweet Home. Once you get down to those engineers making about $85,000, this is a statewide average, by the way, of, of wages. You're getting into that $430,000 range and that's, that could be a little tricky, especially if these growth rates continue for, for home values. Then you get into that middle school teacher and they're right on that line with what we're seeing right now. $340,000 of, of possible mortgage to pay for, for homes. So, you know, that's going to be a real struggle. And then once you get down to medical assistant, retail salespeople, you know, they're looking at max mortgages of 210, $170,000. And that gets to be really, really tough in a community like Sweet Home. So just a really important way to kind of bring the, the housing cost issue to the street level. So bottom line, we're looking at, at a likely increase over the next 20 years based on population growth of 691 dwelling units in Sweet Home. And we can, we can see that, that the upper right table, not the lower right table. We've got that 1,720 people that we're adding. We take out folks in group quarters, so folks who are going to be in like congregate care facilities or dorms, that kind of thing. So that's going to be about 16 people over the next 20 years to determine the population and households that we got to plan for. So that's that 1,703 there you see on the, on the right. We then divide that number by the average household size we discussed of 2.59 to get down to that 658 new units that we'll need. And then we, we make a slight adjustment for vacancy to ensure that we're, we're not undercounting based on vacancy. So we add another 34 units back there to get to that 691 dwelling units. And then again, to kind of go back to that data that we were looking at, from affordability perspective, you see we're projecting in this, in this lower table, the kind of the far left-hand white column there, owner occupied dwellings are going to be increasing only in the upper, upper middle and lower middle income brackets in Sweet Home. We don't really anticipate a whole lot of owner, of homeownership in the low and very low categories. And again, that's, that's largely for the upper income folks. So that's 292 of that 691 dwelling units that we're seeing as an increase in the upper income owner occupied category. And then you can see there on the next column over the renter occupied dwellings, a real good spread across all these different income categories. And, and for, just to give you context, these upper, upper middle, lower middle, low, very low income categories, this is something that's required by the state as well. So we're just doing our due diligence in, in projecting this out. And I think the next slide gives you a sense of what the houses are going to look like structurally speaking. So, you know, based on what we're seeing now, again, predominantly single-family detached, we're saying 503 of those units, of the 691 new units will be in single-family detached stock. And then 46 in townhomes, 49 in multifamily, and then we expect about 90, 93 in the manufactured home category. So that's the housing needs projection. I know I blew through a lot of that, so if there's any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Yeah, if you have any questions, questions now, that'd be great. I also have some slides on the buildable lands inventory that we'll get to next. We can take questions now or after the presentation, either way. Okay, if we have none, I'll just keep rolling. So I'm a geographer and I love maps. I'm a planner too, but my, my background's geography. So anytime I can, this is the wrong slide deck. That's not going to work. Hold on one second. Here we go. They're in here, luckily. So we look at existing land use, which is really important in terms of your zoning, anywhere from your commercial to industrial multifamily. I know we, I looked, I listened earlier and it sounds like there's likely going to be a zone change that we'll have to update this map with based on some of the decisions that were made tonight, if council pushes that through. So again, important to look at existing land use as well as market value. So this is from the assessor's data and we just want to look at total value. So this would be land value plus your, your improvement value, which is the structure that are built on. So anything that's darker green is going to be worth less than a lighter green. And then your comp plan map also, of course, typically you want that to be consistent with your zoning map, but taking that into consideration with, when we're looking at buildable lands is quite important. I mentioned your zoning already. Interestingly enough, you permit residential uses in the majority of your, your zone. So you can see very few of your, of the land within the city limits or the urban growth boundary would be, would not allow, would only allow residential. So this is quite interesting. You have a lot of availability for residential, even in some of your commercial zones. This is the land we've identified as vacant. So this is kind of vacant land where you have capacity for new residential development. Important to know that as well. And this is partially vacant. So interestingly enough, this is kind of different than this. So what we look at here is vacant, which means it has no development. This is what we would consider to be partially vacant. So these may have a home on them, but are large enough that they could potentially be divided and more housing units could be placed on them. So again, this is important as well, because, just because it's developed now, doesn't mean you could put additional housing units on in the future. There's, there's a few other partially vacant miscellaneous that may or may not have some development, but we need to consider those as well. And then once you look at kind of a composite of those, this is your vacant land, your partially vacant land and your partially vacant miscellaneous. So this is what we're considering as lands within the urban growth boundary that could potentially have take those 690 plus units in the next 20 years, wherever they may be. We're looking at developed land too. Any land with improvement value over $10,000 and 20,000 square feet, this team is deemed to have some potential for redevelopment. So these sites that are kind of popping up in, in this pink or magenta, those are areas that through our analysis, we see could have some sort of redevelopment potential. So again, those are developed now, but in the next 20 years, there's potential that they could have, be redeveloped and have residential uses placed on those, whether it's residential only or in a mixed use fashion. And then this would be combining that vacant and developed land with the redevelopment potential. So again, these are the parcels we'd be looking at as, as potential areas for, for that growth. One thing that's really important is we know the land that's vacant. We know the land now that could be potentially redeveloped, but there's also other constraints that we have to take into consideration. So just because it's vacant, doesn't necessarily mean it's buildable. A good example of that would be earlier on, when we were considering the plans for the, the storage and the boat and RV storage, there was a little bit of a discussion on wetlands. And so that's a great example of a parcel that may have a constraint on it. Doesn't mean it's not developable, but it also means you have to consider that there could be potential constraints there. One of those would be public and semi-public lands. So these are typically schools, parks, open space, city-owned properties that you wouldn't typically see being considered for new residential development. So those are kind of a constraint for that residential development. Parks, clearly, we're not going to develop our parks with residential, so those come out of the mix. Open water as well, that comes out, and floodplains. So in floodplains, luckily, you actually don't have a big issue with floodplains. Many cities we work in, I do a lot of coastal planning and wow, you wouldn't believe how, you know, three quarters of the city would be covered in floodplains, but it is something that we need to take into consideration. It's not an outright constraint, because there are mitigation strategies that you can do as part of a development process. It's not an outright constraint, because there are mitigation strategies that you can do as part of a development process that will allow you to develop or in a floodplain or partially in a floodplain. But again, something we take into consideration, as well as steep slopes. Most of the time, it's difficult to develop on steep slopes. You don't have much in the city limits, but typically you can develop on some level of slope if you go through a geotech hazard and you have an engineered solution to be able to do that development. But again, we need to take those steep slopes into consideration. So again, wetlands, I've mentioned that as part of our example. But again, that would be a constraint to development. So when looking at where that growth and those units may develop over the next twenty years, wetlands have to come into play. So when you kind of take all those constraints and all of the land that we would consider to be developable, and you put the constraints on top, you kind of get this nice picture of where what your buildable lands would be. And this isn't finalized yet, but this is just a quick look at what our initial analysis is. But we'll come back with you with kind of a memo and a report on the findings of the buildable lands and the amount and the type. We haven't got there yet, but I just wanted to give you a sneak peek tonight of the data that we've collected and kind of the initial work we've been doing in terms of the buildable lands and the GIS mapping. Next steps, just touching on this, you saw this slide at the beginning, but really just looking at when we're going to come back to you with the buildable lands inventory and basically your measures to accommodate the the housing needs. So in the next few months, we'll be working on bringing that back to you. I think as as our advisory committee, the planning commission will meet two more times on this. And then hopefully, we will look at you recommending this being sent to council for adoption in the fall. So that is the last of the presentation, and I'll kind of open it up to questions. Based on that, hopefully, that was fairly interesting and you got to learn something tonight.
There's a lot of information, and I don't particularly have any questions, but I will take time to digest everything. And I like maps as well, so I'll be scrutinizing them.
That's a really good point. If I could jump in there, I would love if you see errors in the data or you say, that's really not vacant. Any of that information we'd love to have, because the more we refine this, the better the final product would be. So I appreciate the 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 review of these maps before our next meeting.
I have a quick question. In considering the constraints for your buildable lands, do you take into consideration available city services to those lots? Or those properties?
We don't. We're not required to do that in terms of the buildable lands area. But you could do an analysis saying, well, what are the services? Where are those services? And what I would recommend is, you know, typically, the the areas that have the that infrastructure in place already, that's likely going to be the areas that develop quicker. So that would be a neat thing we could look at is what where of these vacant and buildable lands and redevelopable lands, what already has the infrastructure in place to allow the debt development to occur kind of first? And we'd have a pretty good idea of where that could occur. That's a good, good comment.
I did notice a few things on your map, as well as in the vacant, buildable areas. One of them, I think, we just cleared the subdivision on in Clark Mill.
Yeah.
Section, so.
Yeah, we tried to get the what we call pipeline projects that are already approved. We've identified some of those and removed those. But, you know, as the planning commission, you know best, because you're the ones that likely approved them. So let us know if we've identified something that we think is vacant that already has approved projects.
Well, they've been coming hot and fast lately, so.
That's what we've heard.
Might be good this week and might be not, not so much next week.
Okay.
I guess one of the questions I had with Angela prior to this meeting is is somewhat addressed by what you just did with your map. And I think we're looking at at some point, maybe if we could figure out how many buildable, sellable lots are have been approved here in Sweet Home or are available to build on. I know we've had a ton of subdivisions come through and just trying to kind of think of how many lots we've approved versus how many are are already built on.
No, I think that's a good way to look at it, too. What one thing we've done as part of these Housing Needs Analysis studies is taking a look, kind of a backcasting, at what you've improved in the past five years, in terms of how many single family or multifamily you've looked at. So we've taken a look at that data, but I think, you know, that is something that we should take into consideration, because it really allows us to make sure that the predictions match up with kind of the past. Because typically, you know, when you're doing these forecasts, you're doing your best to use the data that the the population forecast, but you also need to kind of backcast and look at what you've done in terms of permitting in the last five years or so.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm not going to go against the math or the data or the formulas or anything. But, you know, we've been in town seventeen years and Sweet Home's done more growing than probably the last year than the previous sixteen. So unfortunately, more people are finding us and moving here.
Well, and you're just about to break that ten thousand mark, right?
We've got to be right, right, right there. Yeah, we did pass it.
I I I think it literally we passed it, but we were waiting on the bureaucrats to catch up.
Oh, right. It's COVID related.
Well, no, I mean, the the, I mean, population estimates are necessarily a little bit delayed.
Right.
And so Portland State does their annual questionnaire, and it's always, you know, what did you do in the last year? And so depending on the cutoff, when it when we had the census come through, right after it was done, we immediately had a massive amount of apartments suddenly built. So we knew that that was pretty much out of date as soon as it was taken. And that's just the way it is with with those kinds of estimates.
I guess you're always going to be playing catch up.
Seems like it. Well, great. If we don't have any other questions, we, Tim and I appreciate your time tonight. And thank you for allowing us to be on your agenda for three of our meetings through this process. Hope you find it interesting and learned something.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your work.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Good night.
Thanks. That's got to be an absolute ton of work.
Yeah. Lots of factors. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, lots of impacts. Well, look at Clark Mill. We're adding a lot of traffic on that poor little street.
Well, and eventually even more, I think there's going to, is there going to be an auxiliary exit to the park at some point on Clark Mill as well?
Well, yeah, if Corey Park is developed the way we want, it would have some access coming off of there. Yeah. And and actually, the the mill property has a little driveway onto there. It's a little tiny one, but the house that's, the owner of the mill property is trying to wire a house next to that so that it can be made larger, be an actual street there connected, which would be great.
Yeah.
We can get that happening. But that, you know, there certainly is going to be traffic. And the more connections we can make, the more options we give people, the better the flow is going to be. Hopefully, doesn't make it so that one poor street is a barrier.
Right.
Hopefully, it's ten poor streets that are a barrier. We get those all ten fixed.
We're kind of down that same road that they're speaking about. I mean, is there, are there traffic studies with ODOT that can be done as well to facilitate? Maybe this part of town is more more ready for development over another portion of town?
So we we are updating our transportation system plan. And that kind of outlines that that plan should include proposed streets for vacant areas, the best ways to to bring accessibility to those areas. The one thing that's always going to be true, though, is that for a lot of land, the 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 last, I wouldn't say last mile, last last quarter mile is always going to be up to that developer to to put in. And so that's, that's one of the frustrating parts of 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 planning and and development is that the cost of putting streets in is always so large that you have, some big developers don't care. They they have a a big capacity and they're going to build a whole bunch all at the same time. We've seen some of that. But then you have smaller, smaller operations where they don't have those deep pockets and they're looking to get by it. They're going to find a way to to build what they need to, that can get by without going into that huge expense. And so we we do need to find ways to help or or prevent kind of piecemeal development, because it unfortunately, it happens where somebody owns a big piece of land and they'll carve off a little bit and build one house one year and then do the same thing the next year. And sooner or later, you have a whole subdivision that was built without actually being a subdivision. And so we try to avoid that from hap, we try to keep that from happening. And the updates to the code will certainly help. But there's a, there's an education component there and trying to help people realize what they could do if they are willing to get some financing and and develop more all at the same time.
Will the TSP include any like traffic impact analysis that identify some of our intersections that we could have some problems with?
I believe there will be some traffic measurements involved in it. It's going to be kind of existing patterns.
Okay.
That they'll that they'll use. I don't know the extent of.
Do they look at like accident records, go back and look at that? And like, I just keep thinking Clark Mill and the highway and all of the traffic that's going to be pulling out onto the highway and Pleasant Valley. Yep.
Yeah, those are, and this is that traffic, we're supposed to be having that done right now. And it's taken so long to get the consultant on board that I still hasn't really started yet. Really, really frustrating. But yeah, I hope to see all of those things.
Yep.
Well, we're on the code review part, and unfortunately, we don't have Walt with us tonight. We do have some remaining time. And so it's, we we included this because we wanted to keep pushing this forward. So if you're up to it, we can pick up where we left off and review some of the changes that work for all of you.
I can see what we can do in thirty five minutes.
Where did we, where did we stop? I gotta look through and remember where we stopped. Let's play an article two.
How about article three? I think we were into plan development.
Sounds right.
I think we might have finished planned and we're into seventeen points six two cottage cluster, maybe.
Yeah, I gotta find my, gotta find my notes.
Yeah, yeah, seventeen points six two.
I think that sounds right.
I put an arrow there.
Don't leave, it's just getting good.
Yeah. It's my cue to leave, too.
Questions to be asked about in the later. Angela's going to go grab her laptop. Takes a long time to put food levels in coffee.
Laura, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
How, is it a foot before somebody has to cut their grass? What is the city code?
Ten inches, I believe.
Because this commercial lot on Main Street by the bank.
Oh, wait, I'm glad we.
Yeah, the empty lot, it's for sale. It's between McDonald's and, but it's side road right there. That's, it's about two feet, two and a half feet tall.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's a nice word for being right on Main Street.
Almost guarantee it's it it it's either, I mean, it's definitely.
It's almost reaching his for sale sign.
Sure.
That people wouldn't be able to tell if it's for sale then at that point.
No, it's definitely a violation, and chances are it's already on the list. But certainly make that complaint. I'll pass it on to Ethan.
Okay, I made that complaint.
Even better if you contact Ethan direct.
Okay.
In Lebanon, that was always directed to the fire district, tall grass.
Tall grass, was the complaint in the fire district?
Except all the way.
Except that our fire district doesn't have the personnel to go out and do code enforcement. So, which, I mean, I wouldn't mind, frankly, I wouldn't mind passing that off to a different entity. But because it's, it's a thankless, difficult job.
Especially if the person wants to sell the property, you know, curb appeal means a lot when people see that, you know.
How many people don't understand curb appeal?
And then the the neighbor that just kind of like redid their house, I'd be complaining. I'm surprised they haven't complained.
Yep, yep, yep.
All right, so.
They can mow it after they get moved in.
Looking at page three to seven one. Seventeen point six two cottage cluster developments.
That has to stay on the. That has to stay on the dashboard, because Walt said he's going to ask around about.
Yeah, he's he's looking for some examples. So not really any changes to that page, just some comments and we'll get some pictures for you or some ideas. So. So it's the next page, three dash seven two. Commented that the the audit suggested setbacks apply only to external lines. Oh, the setbacks only apply to the the external property lines. So for a cottage cluster, there's no setbacks within that. They're all in relation to each other. So it. These these development setbacks are.
They might have to be modified then to to work with cottage clusters.
I've got so much papers here, I can't.
So those those setbacks are not, those are setbacks that are on the outside. Standing Angela that. You have a parcel that has those setbacks and then all the structures within it, they have, they don't have to be those same setbacks, because there's not a separate lot for you to have a front or a rear or a side.
Is there a fire code that would govern separations of buildings?
Yeah.
That aren't conjoined?
That's that's the main thing that would would keep the the cottage cluster from being right up against each other as you look at that building code and fire code on that separation, required separation between structure. Typically sixty.
Prevent the spread of COVID amongst the cottages as well.
So.
Maybe.
Betsy said so.
Walt says here that a cottage cluster may include individual lots. Didn't realize that that was.
Wouldn't that be a plan development at that point?
Maybe he could supply some pictures.
Yeah, that'll be part of the. So yeah, I guess there is a potential for either all being one lot or being smaller lots within that development.
I don't remember seeing anywhere, does it actually give a minimum square footage? For a cottage in a cottage cluster? Or would that fall back on building code?
Minimum square footage?
Of the structure.
I don't think it has any. Our current code doesn't have minimum square. Unless it's a, unless it's a manufacturer.
It says there's no minimum. It says there's no minimum.
Yeah.
Lot size. For the entire, that's the entire piece. Right.
And then the structures themselves, there's not a minimum square footage.
I I just, I've seen cottage clusters in the past where the the homes are basically one bedroom units, possibly two bedroom units. But they are significantly smaller than like a single family residential building.
Yeah, yeah. And that's kind of the one of the point, one of the appeals of it is that you have a place that's quite small, but they have community facilities.
Right.
Make up for that lack of size or they target folks that are really looking for much more to take care of.
Right.
Um the interesting thing that that we run into with these minimums is that these are, these would be stick-built structures typically. Um I've heard people want to have, you know, a cottage cluster of tiny homes. One of the problems with that is, yeah, those might be the size that they're thinking with the cottage cluster. The way those are constructed, they're considered basically recreational vehicles or they're constructing, considered a manufactured home because they don't fit in the criteria. Uh they're they're built on a trailer typically. And uh so in the code, they basically would fall into one of those two categories depending on how they're constructed. And so it's a, right now, you wouldn't really be able to to do that unless it was in RV park.
Yeah.
Or a manufactured home park.
You could do either stick build or modular home.
True, yeah. So on the next, on three, three dash seven three, uh there was one change where it said that change should to shall have primary entrance facing the public right of way for units along the public right of way. And then the audit suggested one space per unit of parking. And Walt suggests maintaining two spaces because they're developed differently, but they're still single family homes.
And this is two spaces off street.
Yes, it's off street.
Yes, two off street spaces. So uh I'm not sure I I agree with Walt's logic there. Yes, they're still technically single family homes. But you're gonna have smaller occupancy for a cottage cluster than a per unit than you are a single family home. But that's there, that's an option for you to consider changing the parking requirement. Um the the code audit is based on state rules and not necessarily a requirement, suggestion.
Would that be a case by case analysis more than likely than when when that's submitted for permits?
Well, this this here has, in this part of the code, it's a site requirement. And so we would, if we got a an application under this code, if we get an application for a cottage cluster, we're gonna look at this and say, well, it says a minimum of two off-street parking spaces per unit and you need to provide this. So so that would be one of the criteria that we look at to make sure that they can accommodate that.
I I mean, I can see why he would suggest that we keep it two off-street parking. Uh because even though one person or oh, there might only be one person with one vehicle living in the unit, any company would require parking and since cottage clusters don't necessarily like an apartment complex have a parking lot where guests could go.
Well, they could.
Keeping, well, it could, but having two spaces, that might be an incentive to have a parking lot as opposed to just in front parking.
They came to us with like a proposal as like a plan development where they are require or requesting one parking space, but also including in that development additional parking areas. That might be something we could consider.
So this, the way I read this, this is doesn't necessarily say where the off-street parking spaces have to be. They just have to be off-street. So you could have a, you could have a, it develops so that there's a a space at each home and then there's a communal parking.
Yeah.
It could not be also defined as a single car garage with room in front of it to park another one parts outside.
On this, on this particular.
But the other thing to consider is all the times we've seen plan developments that are only allowing for parking on one side of the street.
Yeah.
And then if you only require one parking place per unit, that's too tight. So I agree with Walt to stick with two.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Two, two. Parking's always a problem.
Um on three dash seven four. It just changes the word should from should to shall be designed to retain existing significant trees. That's consistent with our current, with other code provisions. And then further down. There's a strikeout for street improvements, under streets, street improvements shall be required for all cottage cluster developments. And then it strikes out that contain four or more dwelling units. This is, that's kind of redundant, which is why it was struck out because by definition, a cottage cluster development has more than, has four or more units. Alright. Later on in the next page going on, it talks about street improvements and it says it changes May to shall. And specifies what it needs to require. Like, that's consistent with our other code provisions. The only changes for the cottage cluster sections. That brings us to seventeen point six four manufactured dwelling parks. There's a proposed change there to um under the scope under A permitted housing. It classes, it crosses out class A or B manufactured dwelling permitted in all manufactured dwelling parks, crosses that out, replaces it with there are no restrictions provided. There are no restrictions provided, um provided no manufactured dwelling shall be more than ten years in age at the time of placement.
So maybe there should be a comma after there are no restrictions, comma, provided no manufactured dwelling.
Yeah, that makes it more readable.
Otherwise it sounds funny.
Yep, I agree. So um I asked Walt what, if we need to make it clear what class A and B is, that's been changed so we can get rid of that. Walt's answer was that the age limit effectively requires newer class A homes. Pre-existing homes are allowed, but can only be replaced by homes ten years or newer. So this, this change kind of makes that uh eliminates that distinction, really needing to worry about class A or B. One that changes uh in density, it changes gross to net acre. Maximum density of the park shall not exceed eight units per net acre. That way, you're not uh, you're not counting streets um in that calculation.
I don't mean to pop backwards for just a second, but back back in cottage council really quick with the attached garage. And we're saying that the maximum of the garage cannot exceed three hundred square feet per unit. I've seen a lot done where there are two car garages on the bottom, homes on the top. Is that massively limit the size of the structure that could be built?
Define the part, what page is that on?
Uh, it's three dash seven six. It just seems odd that nowhere else in that, in that chapter does it delineate or define space sizes or anything like that yet.
So an accessory structure would be separate from the house itself.
Okay, so you're moving, he's removing attached.
If you're talking about cottage that's attached to the garage. Or a garage that's attached to the cottage, then there's no change in, there's no limit on the size. So you could have, you could have a cottage that is over a two-car garage, but it's all one structure. That's not an accessory structure. The accessory structure would, accessory structure uh in this case would be a garage that is separate from the building.
But it's not, no, this is this is up above at the top, number one, all the way to the top.
Oh.
It's also got the three hundred square feet per unit.
How many square feet is a two, is a two-car typical?
Well, I mean sixteen by twenty sometimes. And you're a typical what's the minimum, minimum depth is twenty feet for an interior garage. I mean, if you're twenty feet wide, twenty feet deep. Yeah, so.
Yeah. So I mean, um yeah, I I guess uh really goes into what you think the character of a cottage cluster should be if it, if it's.
Seen really good designs both ways, so. I mean, I agree with the three hundred square feet of accessory structure.
Yeah.
That you don't wanna take away that, that, you know, appearance factor in the cottage cluster. But at the same time, I've seen it done really well, two-car garage on the bottom and a living space on top.
Well, uh what's the, I guess if there's a consensus among the planning commission, we can adjust that.
But I don't know, I I would just maybe be in favor of omitting the maximum square footage for a garage.
Okay, and just have a maximum building footprint.
Yeah.
Omit that sentence on.
Yeah. So then if they chose to do it either way, I mean, the building still can't be any bigger than a thousand square foot.
That gives the flexibility to the designer to.
Yeah.
Take out the sentence where an attached garage is.
Yeah, just that whole.
Although, would you say, so it, in this case, it says an attached garage is not included in this maximum.
Period.
Yeah.
But then, then you would risk having.
Then you risk having a thousand square foot cottage.
Yeah. So you could just change the maximum building footprint to thirteen hundred square feet. Including garage. Including the garage. And that way, cause, cause as as this is written right here, if it, if a garage can't be bigger than three hundred square feet, but it's not included in that maximum building footprint, then you could conceivably have some that's thirteen hundred square feet foot footprint for that, that structure. Um and if you don't wanna limit the garage size within that, you could stick, you could just change the standard to thirteen hundred square feet.
I just think it would give them, like you're saying, give the designer more flexibility.
They could still have a four hundred square foot garage and a nine hundred square foot cottage.
Right.
And everybody understands footprint, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, you're looking at it, okay.
Yeah. That's just going out.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So they, if they had multiple stories.
Right.
So, so I'm not sure that we need to add the additional three hundred then because it really is, if they're gonna build on top.
Right.
Then the thousand square foot um footprint can stay the same and they just build the garage in the, in that footprint.
I'm, I'm.
I'm just saying, if if in that, you know, under that scenario, then you could conceivably be smaller than what this is allowing. Uh the way it's written by by just changing that sentence. So it's kind of.
I mean, I guess, I guess I agree in the fact that if they want a bigger garage, they change the design, put some of the living space upstairs. And we just work with that thousand square foot.
Yeah, I don't want little houses with giant garages attached to them everywhere, you know, someone's building cottages.
Giant garages with the house hit to the height.
So do you wanna stick with a thousand square foot uh footprint or would you be open to thirteen hundred square?
I, I think a thousand square feet's pretty good for a cottage cluster. I mean, if you wanna go bigger, you can go do a plan development or just divide it into a, make a subdivision.
Yeah. So is consensus then just to remove that sentence of an attached garage is not included in this maximum, but so I would say three square feet per unit, just eliminate that sentence entirely.
Just that the overall building square footage, square footage is a thousand square.
So maybe say cottages don't have a maximum building's footprint of a thousand square feet, comma, including garage.
Including any attached garage.
Are we requiring them to build up?
No, I mean, you could essentially go one car.
Limitation.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet. Uh oh, but it says and are limited to a maximum of a single story plus a loft.
So it's like a one and a half story.
Right. The way in that.
I mean, essentially that's my house.
Well, yeah, but if that stays the same, then you wouldn't have any, any living space over there. You wouldn't have a.
Wouldn't be able to build up.
It'd be a loft over a garage.
But isn't the loft also defined as a half-story? So it's, you can have living space above it.
Sure.
It doesn't say storage loft.
True, but it's just, it's not, I guess my understanding of a loft is that it's not very used.
Yeah.
Space that the most you do it for me. Maybe that's just my own opinion.
That would preclude your second story about your garage, though. Design.
I mean, that's the size my house is. So.
Yeah.
We have Walt, look at this.
Maybe just kind of see if, see if anybody else has done it, what they've kind of ended up with, or some examples. I just, I mean, I'd hate to limit somebody to a, that's a one-part garage.
And we, we just need some more input from somebody who maybe knows more than we do.
Bring that up for Walt.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so that's.
Is there anything else in that section?
I'll wait till your paper takes out and then I'll.
Maybe I'll just assign that to you as homework.
You know, and it's just, I'm sorry, yeah, it is because it's just, I mean, I'm not planning on building one, but I've seen them done really well. And I think there's a market for them in sweet home between um having an apartment complex and high-density duplexes and things like that. They're great for both going up in the housing market and coming back down. Maybe somebody wants to be a retiree with a smaller yard.
Well, frankly, in in this town, a lot of things that would keep people from renting an apartment is not being able to have a shop.
Yeah.
A garage. And if you had a big enough garage, you have the shop space in there.
Or ownership.
Yeah.
Yeah, being able to buy, buy a cottage instead of.
Yep.
Yeah, and have that, that middle market that we, that we're missing.
Yep.
Right. Okay. Alright, so back to manufactured dwelling parks. We talked about the changes on three dash seven eight. Now that brings us on to three dash seven nine. And so there was a there was a table that we hadn't been able to verify, so we just got rid of that. Or we changed it. So Oregon manufactured dwelling park specialty code two thousand two table ten C. That checks out. There was a change in the unit separation to the minimum of fifteen feet, changed to ten feet. I believe we talked about that. Let me turn over this section. Doing his comment. Caretaker. On-site manager required for unit, uh parks of ten units or more. And um Walt's comment was that's a bit steep. Uh simply because of the cost of land and uh land is a commodity and so the recommendation was for maybe fifteen or twenty units. Simply because of the cost of land and land is a commodity. And so the recommendation was for maybe fifteen or twenty units have that requirement.
How many units are in, how many units are in the complex across the street?
I'm not sure, but I think there's at least fifteen in there. I want to say like eighteen. Yeah, Ethan and I have both been out there, we've dealt with it certainly plenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then Walt's comment also was ten, the ten foot separation is also standard.
It's standard, but we don't have to go with it.
True. Right now, and then under the storage facilities required, this is, that's certainly fine and apparently even wanted to look at garage or carports required for manufacturing homes. I would say with that language in there, it's going to be a carport.
Yeah. I mean, it's something.
As long as we do require the storage shed. If.
Yes, right now, the draft has it required a, a storage shed.
Yeah.
Do you want us to look to, at, at having carports required?
Well, I mean, I guess.
The new, new development.
And honestly, I mean, most of them, there's a continuation of the structure's main roof out over their driveway and they've got a little storage shed in the back of it. I mean, it, it's fairly standard. I guess we just have to think if we want it. Written in stone.
So I, I think storage facility, we already talked about this before and have that in there. Do you want carport in there as well? Or leave it as, as.
Well, is it? Talk about that, parks must include a carport or garage per unit.
Sorry, I missed that. No, it's already there. So it's good. All right, nevermind. Sorry for wasting your time on that one. We've only got eight minutes left, so I'll just.
I mean, I guess, I guess the separation of ten feet. I mean, standard residential got.
Five foot setbacks.
On each, so that ends up at ten.
Right. Seems fair.
Blair, are you trying to waste eight minutes? Is that what you're trying to do just?
All right, that brings us on to three dash eighty one. Seventeen point six six manufactured homes on individual lots. The, your question to Walt was if we can legally put an age limit on manufactured homes on individual lots. And his comment back was just that compliance with the thermal envelope effectively requires a new or newer unit. Which is an easy way of making that distinction.
Doesn't that already exist in building code that manufactured homes over a certain age aren't allowed?
No, unfortunately not. That's why we added in that they have to be.
Because I thought at one point Josh Victor had mentioned that, you know, if it was older than, he had a date to, he popped it right out.
Because you're like banks going finding.
Like some.
No, it's, it's, it's like mid.
If it's over a certain year.
He threw it right out. I have to find out, or maybe figure out where it's gone.
Yeah, the energy efficiency part, it.
That, that would pretty much do it unless somebody wanted to fully remodel.
The actual language. Yeah. So in this chapter, it says the exterior thermal envelope must meet the standards specified by state law for single family dwellings as defined in O R S four five five point zero. So it brings it up to the required energy efficiency of a single family home, the current energy efficiency required. And to my knowledge, that's fairly recent for a manufactured dwelling.
Yeah, it's more recent than nineteen eighty four.
Yeah, well, I mean, it doesn't stop anybody from taking a mid seventies manufactured home and stripping it down and put.
Well, retrofitting it to put the right amount of insulation in.
Yeah, sure.
That would be great if people actually took care of homes well enough to do that.
Can we require them to be HUD certified or have the HUD tag on it?
Well, they have to have the plate on it anyways. Yeah. There's a manufacturer's tag that's.
So that would rule out your old ones that they strip down and make energy efficient.
Inside, we used to do them. We did probably ten here in town.
Are there some of that stuff there?
Yeah.
No.
Another comment on this chapter is that the audit suggested adding modular homes to this chapter. And then he adds this note, modular, modular homes are effectively equivalent to a site built structure, both require building permits and inspection. These regulations follow state law, which were designed to allow a specific type of structure. So I, I don't really see why the audit would, why they would suggest that because we're not stopping modular homes.
No, and you don't want to lump modular homes with manufactured homes.
I don't think so either.
Building codes are different for each.
Find their recommendation to be rather strange.
Yep.
In fact, I'd love it if somebody came and said, I want to put a modular home in because I'm like, oh, we don't have any and I want to see it. And there's some really cool things that you can do with them.
Well, that's one of the cottage clusters I saw in Portland, and it was all modular homes. And it was done as kind of a prototype.
Yeah.
Do we have any of those cross mod homes? Like, I know Clayton has cited some of them in Lebanon. They're called cross, cross mods. They are a cross between building, a stick built and a, a mobile or manufactured home, but they are on a foundation with attached garages that you access through. It's like, it looks like a house.
So that would be a modular.
Yeah.
They call them a cross mod.
Yeah, it would come on a trailer and then be craned off. Yeah, it would be modular.
I think you would.
We had an inspector that could not tell the difference. He did not know that was a manufactured.
We could, yeah, we would consider those a modular home.
Yeah.
All right, and that brings us to.
Three eighty four.
Three dash eighty four is the next one on home occupations. Talked about lowering the number of children in a daycare facility to eight to twelve. Walt's comment was actually watching more than three children not related requires registration with the state, recognizing not over, everyone will register, limiting such activities to eight may be a good idea. If more than eight, it becomes a home occupation and city would, could, could require proof of licensing, which has a number of requirements, there's a CPR certification, food handlers permit, et cetera. Seems perfectly reasonable to change that to eight from twelve, which is what he expressed interest in before. So, unless there's any further comments on that, we're two minutes away from eight thirty and.
It's done.
At seventeen point seven zero.
I think we just keep guessing.
Hopefully at the next meeting, we can finish this all out. Get ourselves a public hearing scheduled.
That's right.
Points of information, we brought that up at the last council meeting and I did some estimates on how long it would take the computer to read through this entire thing. And what I came up with is my guess is that if we had the computer read it at two times speed, then it would take six and a half hours to read the whole thing straight. And we asked the council what they wanted to do for adoption and they surprised me and said, we'd rather rip off the Band-Aid and do it all at once. So when it finally gets to them and it has to, and they have the public hearing and approve it, they're basically saying, go ahead and schedule a special meeting that we know would be at least six and a half hours long. And we'll read the whole thing.
So what, by the end of the code, they're not going to know what they're proving as well?
What, I mean, there was talk of, there was talk of bringing in food, ha- having a nice meal while you listen.
Got to bring a tone in too, because they'll probably nodding off.
Yeah, one asked, said something about as long as I have my phone, I'm good. And I'm like, don't ask, don't tell.
The reasons will be on one television.
You know, we'll, got to be careful with that kind of thing, but I think, you know, if they want to do six and a half hour meetings, staff will step up. I won't make Angela sit.
If you're using your phone, can't you then be subject to a public records?
Uh, yeah, that's something they're going to want to watch out for.
They're doing it, they're doing it under, you know.
Why I'm saying, don't ask, don't tell. You run the risk of that, I guess.
Yeah. Anything coming for us?
Anything exciting?
Yeah, something exciting.
She's so excited about it.
Just one lot or more lot.
A hole.
There was something in the paper last week.
We'll have to redo our buildable lands inventory.
If you haven't gone by, you should drive through, I'm, I'm planning on driving over there. Far as since it's dark now, but the, the Mountain View subdivision, all the building permits are out for the, maybe not all, but almost all, there's building permits for almost every single lot in there.
Is that the Chad Davis homes?
Yeah.
Behind.
They're already, they're listed for sale.
Yeah, so they, they're.
They're on the market.
They're all, they're all being built all at the same time.
I'm there every day serving meals.
And all, and all the work that you see done there right now was done in the last week. So they're, they're moving super fast. And I bet you there's.
He builds a good home.
Yeah, and I bet you, you're going to see all those done by the end of the year. You're going to see an entire neighborhood, this is spring up, crazy.
How many different plans is he doing? Okay.
We also had a pre-application meeting with Samaritan, one of their care center.
Good.
And so I've seen the plans, they look cool.
Yeah.
It's going to be big. I didn't realize it was going to be that big, but it's going to be primary care and urgent care and a dentist.
We'll take it.
And a pharmacy.
We'll eat it.
We do.
Especially out there.
Yep.
The helipad.
And helipad.
Oh, yeah.
There'd be a drive through for the pharmacy.
Fire.
It's looking pretty, looking really good. They said that they were looking at by the end of May, having the building permits submitted.
That'll be a really nice entity as well for Wiley Creek. I know they're not related in what they're doing.
No, Samaritan was very specific about working with them to make that, make it supportive for them.
And if they filed permits for their construction at Wiley Creek.
For Mose, for Mose, yeah, they, they filed for the memory care building.
Yeah.
But then they did some modifications with it because of process materials and allocated materials. And then you run into some trouble because they didn't, their engineer didn't change any of the calculations after. They were just a little surprised with their.
Fire the engineer.
Their engineer out of Ben stood and known to do that and for some reason didn't, so.
Sorry to all.
Well, and then we keep on hearing rumblings that the folks who did the apartments back here are going to apply for their second phase. But we haven't seen anything yet, still waiting.
Do you know what the capacity is of those apartments? Are they?
The ones that are there, I think is a total of forty units.
Okay.
They're all two bed, two bath.
Two bed?
Yeah.
Are they doing leases now on them? Are they filling them?
I don't think they, they're not finalized yet.
Okay, oh, okay.
No, I don't think they even got paved. Called dirt road or whatever.
Well, part of the paving is done, the street is done. I don't know if they, they paved all the parking.
I think the parking lot's done.
They, they actually have to redo part of the cul-de-sac because they, what we had requested was a roundabout that has a place for the street to be extended eventually to main.
Right.
And they instead put in a bull cul-de-sac.
Yikes. Yikes.
Yeah, lots of stuff happened.
All right, with that, we will go ahead and conclude the planning commission meeting for May fifth, eight thirty five.